We'll call the meeting to an order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion of approval of the minutes of the meeting held March 9th, 2020?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. No one signed up, no one wishing to address the board this evening. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved. Second.
I'm going to make a motion now that we have that open for discussion to add an agenda item eight, I, eight I, under the consent agenda, to authorize gratuitous transfer of property. Southeast Tech has been going through their items and they have some surgical gowns, masks, gloves, et cetera, that they would like to be able to donate to Avera Health and Sanford Health. So I'm going to make two agenda item additions. First, we'll be authorizing Southeast Tech Institute to transfer personal protective equipment, surgical guns, masks, gloves, et cetera, to nonprofit corporation Avera Health. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in second on that amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That amendment carries. The next one will be...
An extension. Just one absten-
Oh, one extension. Sorry about that. That, one extension from board member Parker. Thank you, Kate, for pointing that out. On authorizing Southeast Tech to transfer personal protective equipment, surgical gowns, masks, gloves, et cetera, to nonprofit corporation Sanford Health. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries with two extensions from board member Ryder and board member Mickelson. Now on to approval of the agenda with the two addendums. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to the good news report. Dr. Maher will be delivering that.
Well, I didn't think I wouldn't be on that side of the table until July. Here we are. And as you well know, this last week is a week that none of us will soon forget. In a matter of days, our schools have gone from welcoming places of learning where students can access healthy meals, receive medical treatment, receive support for their social and emotional needs and so much more. We've transformed our buildings into empty shells of their intended purpose. Doors are locked, classrooms are empty, and playgrounds are quiet. But still, the learning goes on. Although incredibly disrupted, the learning must continue. I'm humbled and the community of Sioux Falls should be proud of the work done in the past week by the 3,400 Sioux Falls School District staff members. From custodians who have ramped up their already intense cleaning, to child nutrition who are scrambling to serve meals in a different manner than what they had anticipated, and by the way, we served over another 1,200 today, to the many other school district employees who have just been adjusting to their new reality. We're all just learning how to handle this issue and will continue to learn and to adjust and get better together. So I'd like to talk to you tonight about at least a few areas where I think an update to you and an update to the community is warranted. So the good news report might be more just a report. Some of it's good news, some of it's not so good news. But let's start talking about lunches. And in no particular order, I'll talk about a number of things we're doing. But the process we are using to feed students began by approximating the way that we have fed our most food insecure students in the summers. And we've done that for quite some time now. The good news is, we have a method to build on. Feeding kids during non-school hours or non-school days is not new to us. We've been concerned about food insecurity in our community for quite some time. That concept did not arrive with the coronavirus scare. We're glad that others are recognizing the issue during this crisis. But quite frankly, we've been worried about this issue long before the health crisis came our way. And as you know, this issue won't go away when we get the virus under control. The work of eradicating hunger will still be here for us. And I suspect that we have some community partners who will continue their work with us and be in it for the long haul after most of us move on to another topic. However, our reach to our students will grow this week. The increased and expanded reach includes food, school resources, and technology, you know, things kids need. It was determined last Friday that we will implement the use of school buses to help supply resources throughout our district. Those resources will include food, technology, and school supplies, things kids need. We'll continue distribution at the six sites that we've always used, and we'll expand that distribution to a total of 12 sites, where distribution will be supervised by principals at the building level. In some cases, there is delivery from the school to a neighborhood or to an area of great need in the neighborhood, for example, an apartment complex in a couple of instances. Our focus is on the students with the greatest food insecurity. We'll assess this method for delivery of food, technology, and school supplies, and we'll adapt once we get feedback on the system. We'll be better next week than we are this week, and I would contend that we're going to be significantly better this week than we were last week. As mentioned, we'll be delivering things that kids need. So what about instruction? Well, first of all, I want to applaud our teachers for their quick and decisive actions to move their lessons online. We talked for a while about the coronavirus and we were sure it was going to hit, and gosh, wouldn't you think it'll get here? And before we knew it, it was here. If we just would have had a little more PD, a little more time, a little more... But we didn't. And so here we are. I'm proud to tell you, we have some teachers who are shining in this environment, couldn't wait for an opportunity to use the skills that they have. We have others who are getting along just fine, and we have some who are kicking and screaming into our new reality. But the fact of the matter is, remote learning begins tomorrow in our school system. Remote learning is an intentional phrase that we've developed or stolen, quite possibly, as we cannot deliver e-learning to all households. Not all households have the opportunity to receive online learning. So we are calling this remote learning because we will all be teaching and learning remotely. We will accommodate all learning opportunities, technologically driven or otherwise. As you know, to do totally technological learning, we not only need devices, but we need connectivity. And we have households that either are missing one or both of those options for e-learning. So remote learning is what we'll do. As I suspect you know, teachers contacted students today. I'm not going to ask you if that happened in your household publicly, but I'll ask you later. Remote learning will never be a replacement, or at least is not a replacement today, for what goes on in our classrooms. I don't believe it's the same thing, but it's a good option. And today, it's our best option. We know that learning opportunities for all will be made along the way. And we also know that our staff is being asked to provide grace to students and families, as we also ask in turn, grace from our students and families, and return that to our teachers. We're all learning as we go. What we're learning may not be easily assessed. As much of what we'll learn, as much of what we will be learning is how to be resilient, how to adapt, how to adjust, and how to flex into a new reality. In many ways, it's learning like toddlers learn. I thought of that as I saw Snapchat from my nine-month-old grandson. He's learning by experience. He's learning by trial and error. And I would contend, all of us are in that same mode of learning today. I think it's fascinating, albeit very, very scary. Curriculum will be shared beginning at 8:30 a.m. tomorrow, Tuesday. This community should be proud of the collective effort. We've received information from Midco and SDN Communications, who are partnering with us to provide a no-cost internet, to no-cost internet and free Wi-Fi to help students accomplish their learning. We'll do our best to make sure that our students have that in their homes. So, as we navigate our new world, where are we getting our advice? You'll be happy to know it's not just me sitting in my office making things up. Carly, you didn't have to be so happy that that was not the case. We have multiple sources for the information we're receiving. And I would tell you, from a health perspective, our point person is Molly Satter. Some of you who don't know Molly well might think that's a good thing. And those of you who know Molly well would confirm that it's a great thing. Our point person is Molly Satter. She's our district coordinator of health services. Nobody in our district has been more helpful, more influential, more calm, or more valuable than Molly Satter over at least the last two weeks, maybe forever, but for sure over the last two weeks. Molly has great connections with state and local resources, and we've tapped into each of those resources. The city of Sioux Falls has been tremendous. I've had several personal conversations with our mayor and have nothing but admiration for his leadership in this unprecedented time. Many departments in City Hall have been so very helpful to the number of people in our school district with whom they have the closest contact. I'm proud to be a citizen of Sioux Falls as I'm provided a glimpse of what is happening behind the scenes. Between the city, the state, and our healthcare, our local healthcare providers, I feel as though we get to make really well-informed decisions, the decisions that are made with the most updated information available to us. Also, I would tell you that we're community partners. As of this morning, Susan B. Anthony Elementary is up and running as a site for children of patient-facing healthcare workers and emergency responders. This is a collaborative effort between the hospitals, other childcare providers in the Sioux Falls School District. This community can be proud. This was a conversation that began last Wednesday. And Friday morning, I was telling Marie Rickert, principal at Susan B. Anthony, congratulations, you've been selected. And between Monday, or between Friday morning and this morning, Susan B. Anthony was up and ready to go for, who knew how many kids would be there. As it turns out, only two kids were there today, but 23 have been signed up. We can take on 120 at Susan B. Anthony. We're also at the very beginning of this issue in our community, and I suspect the need for that service will continue to grow. I will tell you also that for five years, I've been proud of the effort our staff has given. I can also tell you that never in those five years has my pride risen to the level that it is today. Your staff has done not only what you would expect them to do in this environment, they've done exactly what you would hope that they would do in this environment. We have many questions to answer and many unknowns to face, and we'll continue to face those issues with the humility of not knowing what to do, and also with the audacity of forging ahead into the unknown. If we can find the right balance between humility and audacity, we're going to be just fine as a school system. Good things are happening among this uncertainty. We want people to tell us some of those, of their experiences, by sharing them on social media with the hashtag #ProudToBeSFSD. And I will close by discussing one other uncertain situation, and that is school closing in the Sioux Falls School District. How long will we be closed? And I recognize that the governor will make a statement tomorrow regarding school closings in our state. But since we won't have a school board meeting tomorrow night, I'm going to put a preemptive statement out there that is dependent upon what the governor says tomorrow. I want to let you know that the Sioux Falls School District will be closed for students through Tuesday, April 14th. That is the Tuesday after Easter. In that scenario, we know that students can plan at least for the next three weeks. If the governor makes an announcement tomorrow that is longer than April 14th, we will not only respect her decision, we'll honor that decision. But to be clear, the Sioux Falls School District will be closed until at least April 14th. As we encounter more challenges, we will adjust, and I suspect we'll have much more to be proud of in the coming weeks. I also suspect we'll make many more mistakes in the coming weeks as we all continue to learn, to persevere, to adapt, and to adjust. This was a very general overview of what's going on in the district. I'll stand by for any questions that you might have.
Thank you for addressing these concerns. I think it's prudent, the date we chose right now to give the teachers and families time for more planning. I just want to, all the kudos you've already given to the staff, I just would like to reiterate, I just have been so thankful to everyone at the school district for all of you adapting and changing and being able to address our needs in our community, not just our students' needs, you know, mostly speaking about lunches and breakfasts we have been providing, and making partnerships in our community to do this, and using our resources that we have in a new and different way. It's made me very proud to be a team member of the Sioux Falls School District. Just reminding someone, this is going to be a marathon. It's not a sprint. I mean, the governor, and we've all read, you know, May, middle of May could possibly be our peak. So it's just reminding our students and families, please, please follow the guidelines, and please don't think this is time for friends to get together and go play basketball or whatever. We need to be following this so that hopefully, when summer comes, we can be past this peak of this COVID-19. The grace and relationships, I'm right there with you. We need to give many people grace here in that what we're seeing now is new, and we're all learning, but we're all going to adapt. If there's a better way to do it, we'll adapt. So please don't be judging if we need to make changes. We will adapt to those to make it better for the students and for the staff at the school district. And we know the students miss these relationships with the teachers, and we're going to try to find ways. I'm a mentor in the school district, and I've already started emailing the teacher because we can't have their private information to let, so that she can communicate to my mentor that I'm thinking of her and, you know, sending ideas. So if you are a mentor in the district, that's another way you can reach out to your mentees, to email the teacher, just let them know they're thinking about, you're thinking of them, and you're going to be there when this is all over, so that they can have that stability. And I know the teachers in the district are doing that with their students. So, thank you.
Dr. Maher, I know the staff has been incredible, but I think that's a reflection upon your leadership and your steadfast way to get us through this. So I really appreciate watching you go through this and impressed with. As I have said before, this is when he's at its best, and you truly are. And I think your support behind you is incredible. So, thank you.
Thank you.
There were no new conflicts of interest presented. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items eight A through I amended?
So moved. Second.
A motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to separate consent, agenda nine A, Claims to Sanford Health. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries with two extensions, board member Ryder and board member Mickelson. Nine B, Claims to Avera Healthcare.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries with board member Parker's abstention. On to reports to the superintendent, special education transition to adulthood depth.
Good evening. Although the days past and the days to come are filled with unprecedented events around this health scare, I bring to you tonight a report in which we know we have to keep planning ahead for the time when this is over. So tonight's report reflects study we've been doing over the course of this year in regards to our transition to adulthood programming. It impacts in our strategic plan outcomes for students, our school culture and climate, and having a high expectations within those programs. And finally, in this case, we've engaged community partners to make it more relevant and lead us through this process. So we know life is full of transitions. One of the most remarkable ones we all remember is when we left high school and transitioned to adulthood. So it is for young people with disabilities. The law that guides special education, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, requires that we start talking about that process early through the IEP team. IEPs very deliberately lay out post-secondary measurable goals that focus on the student's interest in employment, education, and independent living skills. Those goals become the basis of each child's individualized course of study, which outlines how we plan those courses to support those goals of the individual. And finally, there'll be a coordinated set of activities that are results-oriented and lead us toward the individual achieving those goals. Parents are involved with the IEP team each step of the way. Occasionally, about an average of 65 per year, students have not completed the required coursework, or the IEP team had to modify coursework to accommodate the needs of their disability, or they have not substantially completed those post-secondary measurable goals. And that student may remain eligible for special education beyond high school and will need to be completed by the time, by July 1st of the year they turn 21. An average of 65 of those students each year we're responsible for, and how those programs look are designed individually, based on their goals and needs. Some of those students may be taking courses in our high schools. Others may be taking a combination of courses with the CTE Academy. Many of you have visited the community campus, and some students' needs are being met there. And in some cases, we purchased that individualized program from another agency in our community. Over the course of this past year, we've spent time really studying our continuum and the outcomes that continuum's generating for students. We've challenged ourselves on how we can always improve outcomes for this group of individuals. We've looked at our data trends within our Sioux Falls School District population. We've researched different delivery models that are used in our region of the United States, and we've made site visits to other places. After that analysis, I bring you three ways we would recommend changes. We would expand the scope of instruction and modify the school day delivery at the community campus to invite, welcome, and address the needs of a wider and more diverse population of young people with disabilities. We would expand and continue to work to expand our partnerships within the community for sheltered work experiences for those youth. And we would develop a Project Search program that would be operated out of the Sioux Falls School District, but in a local business. The Department of Human Services, Division of Volker Rehab, is willing and excited to be our partner in making that delivery happen. Project Search is a well-researched model in our country, in our country, to provide youth with disabilities and immersion into the workplace setting. Today, many of those youth have a half-day in a work setting and a half-day at the campus. In this model, you would be assigned to a work setting, full days. In that year, you would complete three internships in different departments within the business setting, where you're really immersed as an employee of that site. So the Department of Human Services has committed to partner with the district on this journey, and they would provide financial support for any fees to become a licensed Project Search site. They would pay the stipends for students who are doing their internships, and they would provide an onsite job coach for those youth. The district would provide the teacher at the Project Search site. We've engaged in some preliminary discussions with business partners, and we'll move forward with those discussions to determine what one site that would be. It will be important, that site is large enough to offer diverse internship experiences for those youth. In the FY21 budget, which we'll all continue working on, you'll see documentation within it that shows some cost shifting within the special education fund to cover the district's share of those costs, so it does not create additional costs as we move forward. So, we strive to continually evaluate our outcomes for our youth and our pathways for students to improve those outcomes. I bring you this plan tonight as one way to make that happen as we look toward the reopening of our schools for next school year. I would ask you to acknowledge the informational report and stand by for any questions.
Will we be the first district in South Dakota to do Project Search?
Currently, there's a Project Search site in Aberdeen, Brookings, and Rapid City, but we would be the first school district to run it. They're run by other agencies, but the Department of Human Services and I have agreed that we have enough volume to make that happen just here.
I think, not unlike our students without disabilities, we've really shifted our focus to say, how can we get you more hands-on experience? And how can we help you to get into a work environment to kind of test out the waters and see if this is something that you would be interested in doing long-term? And I think it's just as or even more important that we offer these same options to our students with disabilities. So I think this is a fantastic shift and very, very meaningful, both to the student as well as the community, who, there's lots of businesses that are looking for employees, and many of these students, just because they have a disability, doesn't mean that they don't have skills. That would be very valuable in many of our businesses. So by getting them out there and giving them the confidence and having that coach, I think that we'll really see that payoff for both the student and the community as far as getting those workers in their positions that they maybe are having a hard time filling. So, great work. I love the ideas, and I'm excited to see what we can do for maybe proving in South Dakota that this is a very good option to have a school district-based Project Search in comparison to maybe an agency type of a thing, and how we can really serve that population. So, great job. Thank you.
Some other questions? Do I have a motion to acknowledge the special education transition to adulthood? Some other questions? Do I have a motion to acknowledge the special education transition to adulthood programming information report?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Jeff.
Well, we have a video for you tonight, and Ben's gonna put that together, and I'm gonna try to give my report as we're flying over the top of this, so. I'm gonna start with Ben Rifle. And hopefully, we can get this working and I can explain what we're doing. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop it every so often and kind of just touch base with you. So this is the Ben Rifle site. Stop it here, but. The overall. You see my mouse? This is the overall site. As you can see, progress is happening. Faith Avenue, which is right here. All the utilities are in, everything's to our north property line, and they're actually developing beyond that, so they, you can kind of see the tie-in and where it's gonna go as we, as we go to the north. So, the base is in, the utilities are in, and they'll start developing that as later this summer for the curb and gutter and whatnot. So, the city is also doing some work to the east of this property. Lights and those sort of things will be being installed in the corner. Then we're doing Forty-first Street drop-off loop as part of our project with the city. They'll be reimbursing us for that, that'll be right through here. And so those pieces are in place, so. I get there. Majority of the utilities, that, this is a big retention pond for the whole site. All the, the back service drive is in, or the ground is in, of course. But the utilities are in, the main utility trunk goes around that goes into this is installed. We'll have to connect once to, to get the football field, and that'll start happening this, this spring. I think for us, it's pretty well out now, so. I'll get moving forward here. And I want to thank Ben, Ben for doing these. And what you're seeing here is the late February, so there's been a lot of progress since that, and I'll try to say what, what we've done since that time. As you can see, the, what's on the right over here, that's A, A1, this is A, A3, and A2 is right here. And then the music area is about here, and the commons sits right about here. And as you can see, that A3, that, the top, top portion right here, that's completely enclosed, all the floors are poured inside, all the mechanical and electrical are being installed. The roof is actually on. What you won't see here is, see where that enclosure is for this side here? They're, they've installed the exterior brick, so you can kind of see where some of the banding is, and that's done and that's been pulled off, and they're working away around that at this time. A, A1. Here, A1 right here. All the, the, the upper floor is poured now, they're, they're just getting started with the masonry up above. You can see, make sure I cover everything. So they're, they're, they're working on that, the below, all the interior footings. They're putting those in, the, the, all the masonry and the pouring floors in there, all the underground plumbing is completed there. I would say by the end of this week, most of the floors will be poured, then, then they'll start the interior masonry walls that are not there. What you see here on A2 is the structure going up, and that will be the next thing, and that is pretty much, oh, probably three-quarters deck now, and then they'll be pouring that floor as well. And then they'll be working underneath. Right now, we're in a good position, so if the weather goes bad, there's places to go to and keep construction working. So, that's what you try to get to. So it's, it's, it's moving along pretty well. Where you see that plastic there is the, the music area and then goes into the food service area. Most of those bearing walls are complete, and they'll be setting precast. They brought in another crane here in the last couple of weeks. They'll be setting precast over that, that's gonna be our storm shelter. So, that will be where the storm shelter is. Then there's another one in A3 in that back corner, so there's two storm shelter locations. In Area B, that's, that's the music. You can see where that, that'll be the library, so they'll bring up the second floor on both sides of this and then put the arched structure in there, the grand stairs, they'll start putting that together. So, they've got the openings into A3 from that point on the other side. Most of the masonry, almost all the walls are done in there. And so most of the rough-ins for the mechanical and electrical are done in there. And so we're, we're continuing going from there. So most of this area that you're seeing right now has bar joists on it and deck is being installed. Then they'll be pouring the, the second floor level as they're doing the masonry walls on that, A1. You move into the commons, the commons. The cafeteria is this section here, music area, all those masonry walls are now up, and they'll be setting the joists accordingly. And once you get past this, I don't know if we get there or not. We don't, so. Once you get past it, it's, it's the auditorium, the perimeter footings and foundation walls are all in for both the auditorium and the gym, but they're not planning on starting any of that masonry until they get through that academic area. So that will be done late spring. So. That project is, is currently on schedule, and we'll talk about what happens as, as we get past this one. Now we'll move to Jefferson. When you look at this, you gotta, you gotta remember that this is a double the size, so there's gotta be a lot more movement on this one, because we're on the same schedule. So you'll see quite a bit of work happening here, and there's been quite a bit of work done in this last month. You go, go there every, you know, if you go from two weeks period, it's amazing how much work is being done there. I'm gonna stop this here. And you, you can see, this is Terry, Terry Avenue. We're, we're not, we're almost to the end of that, they, they got most of that in, they wanted to get down. I think one of my reports said they wanted to try to get curb and gutter, they got it all state, but then the weather came in. So, which is, I think is a good thing that we didn't get that in, because they're grading the football field on the north, and they're moving dirt to Southeast Tech in that, that valley. We're filling that in and kind of working that to our advantage, what extra dirt we have for this. Instead of hauling it out, we're able to put it, leave it onsite, and it saves us dollars over, over time. But if you want to look at, at the orientation, this is Terry Avenue, that's, this is Marion Road. And I'll stop that, and we can talk about that as we get to the other side. I mean, this, this site also has pretty much all the utilities underground. The electrical service is in, we're operating off that transformer. And they worked on that, the, there's a retention pond in the very northwest corner, and they worked running the, the stormwater piping through the winter, they were chopping frost out all winter and working in that. So it was phenomenal watching what, what they did to, to keep this in on progress. As you can see, that's, that's a loop road, the, the football fields and practice fields are, are, it's kind of out of your realm, but. Kind of see, let me stop this here. You can see where those windows are, that's the, that's along the walking track of the gymnasium. So that's the gym, then the, the food service area. The gym is actually, all the walls are in, there's no floors poured yet, they're just getting started. There's a big underdrain system in there that they'll be working on, then they'll do the floors. But the roof is all on that, the roof is all on the, the, the food service area and the mechanical areas. And you see where the green is, that's all gonna get brick veneer, and that'll be starting here early April. And where the hole is there, that's auditorium fly loft, and the, and there's deck on the auditorium that's just in front of that. We'll swing around here. In, in the downstairs below that, you can see that white area, that's, that's where the weight room, the gymnastics room, the locker rooms are below that. The locker rooms are, pretty much have all the walls in, they're putting the benches in to the, there's concrete benches in. Where the concrete benches where the lockers will sit on top, it's a different, instead of having these wood benches in front, you sit right in front of the lockers and can get dressed. So you can see the kitchen, auditorium, gym, then the academic wings. Now, F is pretty well all enclosed now, and they're starting, G is, the structure almost is up now, and they're just starting on J as, as of today, so. A lot of progress being made, where you see that, where that crane is, it's just outside the admin area. That's the admin area there, most of the steel structure is on that. And you don't see that because it's not here at this time, but the steel roof structure, not the deck, but the, the bar joists and structure is installed. And then even in the commons area, which is between the auditorium and the gym, that bar joists are installed as well. Making a lot of good progress here. Area E will be the first academic house. That will be done, that, that's actually roof now. They're gonna start in April to start doing the brickwork around there. So, you, you can kind of see the footprints of the, the houses, all the foundation work is done around the perimeter and the interior. And if you, as you can see, the, the corridor there, most of the blockwork now is to the end of the, the building, and they're starting to work around to the back, so. They're really starting to tie this one together pretty well. You can see the, the area that's not complete is the music area, they're working on that right now. And that's all masonry. They, they designed this structure so it can be, could be built through the winter. But the one, the plan we used was more of a, a tougher one to build through the winter, because it's all masonry. All had to have, you know, temporary shelters to, to build inside. As you can see, right, right there where all that equipment is, that's the courtyard, that's gonna be that new courtyard for those that sat in that design maybe. We'll, we'll start walking through this and give you some inside shots in the future, so.
Yeah, awesome.
That's when you really start feeling it. Up on that second level, looking down the courtyard into the learning stairs, it's a, it's gonna be really a nice view and great feel for how it's developing. Contractor has three steel crews going, so there's multiple houses and erections going on. They had separate contractors that were putting the precast up, so they were able to take advantage of all that. Like I said, this one right here is almost all frame, steel frame now. This one you're looking at from the main entrance. It's probably flying over Marion Road right now. So Marion Road is, is right, right at the bottom of the screen, and the city has bid that project, the bids came in real well, so they plan on starting that this, this spring. I think you can see some utility work going on there. They're start, they're thinking of putting our curbs and, and on the service drive and parking lots in July, starting in July. They're still using the, some of the temporary asphalt as staging areas, football fields. Our goal is to get it all seeded, you know, the field turf may not be in until next, next year, but we want all the grass around the whole building seeded and everything done by this fall to hit the seeding mark, so we get some growth, growth for the start of school year, so. So it's really taking shape. This project's on schedule as of last week. So, we're monitoring what's going on in the world. There's a little bit, we know ceramic tile, we're looking at options that are available in, in this country, because what we're, we had selected are from Italy. And so right now, that's the only one of last week that the contractor knew there was an issue with. That's changing on a daily basis, so we'll have to keep monitoring and look at what impact that is, but as of last week, they reached out to their suppliers and, and everything was looking okay yet, so. We're hopeful. So with that, I'll just kind of go through what, what future is gonna bring as far as what we're gonna be doing besides getting that and working through all the furnishings and colors and those sort of things. We, we've developed some furniture equipment for both schools, Ben Rifle and Jefferson, and met with all the curriculum people, and they're, they're supposed to be putting some of that together. Then we'll see how that goes. The coordinators are hopefully meeting with the department heads and putting those things together. We, we interviewed four furnishing companies. Missy brought those together, and we're gonna set up some samples in classrooms. A couple of them are in, three of them, we're gonna put up demo in Washington High School so we can see what the input is. I don't know if they, I think, I don't think we have all of them in, so. We may, depending on what the school brings, what kind of input we're gonna, we're gonna have. We wanted to see what works, what doesn't, what they suggest, so we're trying to work through that on both schools. So with that, we're gonna hopefully get, put all that furniture stuff together through the summer and be ready to bid some of that in the fall and see what, because we're gonna need to do that to get it on, installed and delivered on time, so. With that, I'm here to answer any questions. Just look for the acknowledgement of the project status report. And next month, we've awarded all three of the CIP projects, so I'll give you an update on where we're at budget-wise with that, and I'm also planning on bringing you the, some of the owner suggestions on, on floor covering at the, at Jefferson High School that we want to put some tile in and change some tile to carpet and, and some ceramic where we have concrete. So, we'll have that, and then we'll, we'll kind of give you an idea of the owner's contingency, that's what that is, and what those changes will be, and then what the contractor's contingency and where we're at now. I mean, I think we're in great shape yet, so. Don't, don't get me wrong, don't feel nervous, but I think we're still in great shape and things are going well, so. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Have a question, just an observation, and Dr. Maher referred to our schools without our teachers and our faculty and our students as empty shells, and that is by and large true for the exception of two, and that's Ben Rifle and, and Jefferson. And really what a impactful, wonderful reminder that it's truly the individuals that shape our school district and appreciate the work of the contractors to continue to move forward so our schools are ready for our kids in the long term. And Dr. Maher, for your report and the importance of individuals and what they bring to the, to the buildings, thank you.
Thanks to Jeff and to Ben, it's, it's really fun. I don't get out to Jefferson very often, and so, and obviously if I went out there, I wouldn't get the great views that we were able to get today with drone footage. So, it's fun to be able to, from the warmth of your own home, be able to check them out and, and see. So I hope that the public will take a look at these videos and get excited about the schools that we have coming online and what that additional school. what that additional space will have to offer. And I'm sure we'll get more videos like that as we go along, but much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think especially with Jefferson and the changes of people's boundaries, these drone footage help bring more excitement of what that potential building will look like for those families. Thank you.
It's pretty neat, the technology we have today. So, look forward to getting you some inside stuff. So, I mean, things are starting to, you know, in that one academic E wing is you got block walls going up and you're starting to see the form and what it's gonna look like. So, what the classrooms are. So, it's pretty neat stuff.
Do we have a motion to acknowledge the project status report for the district's capital improvement project?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Onto 2020 legislation.
Thank you. Last time we met was the last day for bills to get out of the houses and then it was right before the conference committees met. So, we kinda had a pretty good idea how things are gonna look. We tracked 59 bills. Twelve of those are considered key. Of those, we supported one and opposed 11. The 11 we opposed failed. The one we supported was the governor's compromise bill, Senate Bill 170 on Capitol Alley. That passed. The other thing, of course, we watch is the budget and what's going on with state aid. House Bill 1043 had passed when we met and, or had, not when we met, but after we met and it had passed and it gave schools a 2% increase. And 1042 is the bill that redid the allocations for SPED, which kind of netted out at a 2% increase for us as well. Those bills both passed. Things looked kinda good. Things have changed in the last week and a half or so. There were rumors that when the legislature comes back on veto day, which is next Monday, March 30th, that those might go back to 0%. So, we'll, the appropriation bill hasn't been signed by the governor near those two bills. So, we'll have to watch that. So, things looked pretty good a couple of weeks ago and now, as far as the funding goes, we're up in the air. So, we'll stand by and wait to see how that goes. So, on that good news, I'd just ask you to acknowledge the report on the 2020 legislation that's presented. I'd stand by for a quick.
Move to acknowledge.
Do I have a second? A motion to acknowledge, as well as a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and sign, motion carries. Onto revised authorization for superintendent schools to suspend and/or reinstate the illness documentation for policy JH/ JH-R student absences and excuses.
Yeah. All right. I'll make a motion to authorize the superintendent to suspend and/or reinstate the illness documentation requirement of policy JH and accompanying regulation student absences and excuses as necessary based upon the level of student absences and clinic capacity to see patients or as otherwise advised by healthcare professionals.
Second.
The motion is second. Discussion. Originally, this was also stated during the H1N1 spine flu outbreak in 2009. So, this has been brought back this time in case of outbreak or peak in super balls to allow us to amend that absentee policy. So.
It really impacts that 10-day, 10-days of absences. Yeah.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and sign, motion carries. Onto first reading. Yep. Oh, sorry. They were talking about first reading of policy on grading recovery system.
Yep. So, we've got IKA and its accompanying regulation grading recovery system. We made extensive changes to this, so it is up for first reading. So, definitely recommend people go out there and read up on all the changes. The biggest, most significant change is that we are moving to what's better known as a 10-point scale. So, 90 to 100 is an A, et cetera. 80 to 89 is a B. So, again, extensive changes to both the policy and the regulations. So, I recommend that people go out there and take a look. So, I would move to acknowledge the first reading of IKA and its accompanying regulation with the understanding that it will return for a second reading on April 27th, 2020.
The second. I'll second. Sorry. Out loud. I am going to make a motion to amend IKA-R on page 11, line 35 of the first reading and insert the transcript for any student in which multiple numerical scales were utilized during their high school career will contain a notation indicating in which school year the numerical scale was changed. Do I have a second?
Second.
And this is just so students who are in high school or receiving high school credit so that they, when this grading scale is changed, if adopted in the fall of next year, that there's a notation on that since it won't be backwards.
Won't be retroactive. It'll just be moving forward.
I have a motion and a second on my amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and sign that that amendment carries. And so, the first reading now is, do I have onto that?
Nope.
Yes. And this is out on the district website and the amendment will be added to that as well. Now, onto hiring action.
I would like to make a motion authorizing the issuance of a three-year contract with Dr. Jane Stavum for the position of superintendent of schools beginning July 1st of 2020.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying, or is there any discussion? No. Seeing none. All those in favor of Carly's motion for hiring action of Dr. Jane Stavum for July 1st of 2020 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and sign, motion carries. This isn't on our agenda, but just for the good of the community who might be watching, our budget first work session will be this Wednesday, 3:00 PM. It also will be, let me see, livestreamed as well as recorded. So, if you aren't able to attend, but that'll be the first one. We're also having the second one, April 8th, 5:00 PM. So, two options for you. So, that will be the first one. So, you can kind of get and digest it. Second one, if you have follow-up questions, we'll have that one. We'll do the same setup as we have here so that if there are people, public wanna come, we'll try, we'll have it spread out so people can attend, some overflow and so forth, so that we can make sure to have public input. Our board phone numbers and emails are, of course, on the website as well. So, please feel free to reach out to us or to IBC during this time too, if you have other questions or concerns on that as well. So, thank you. Thank you again to everyone and Dr. Maher for everything. We appreciate it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and sign, we are adjourned. Let's check to make sure if there's anything you guys need to sign here.